March 20th? No, not March 20th. April 8th, USD 350. Board of Education, any word? Welcome, Coach Kinnaman.
Oh, thanks.
Any additions or changes to the agenda?
I have none.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Moving second in the board approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, aye. Pose may. Motion carried, five zero. Any, anything on the consent agenda you'd like to discuss?
None.
Anything motion to approve?
Mr. President, I so moved.
Second.
Moving second in the board approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, aye. Pose may. Motion carried, five zero. Patron comments this evening? All right, we move on to business agenda. Item number one, consider handbook changes. Information item.
We include the handbook in your supporting documents. It is important that the board understand this document because it does have the force and effect of other board policies. So anything we put in here is, becomes board policy. Not looking at some, any major changes. This has no edits. This is just our current year. Looking at, on our breakfast program, you know, it says after 7:45, we don't allow kids to eat. So we have to cut it off somewhere. Well, we have our new grab and go program that, we need to fit our policy with that. Celebrations and classroom parties. Right now, we allow any sort of treats with allergies and just not being able to verify who's bringing what into our school. Lisa Cornwell has recommended that we do like a lot of districts do. Most districts do not allow homemade treats in the classrooms. So that's something that we consider as a change. Mr. White, anything you're, we're looking at for?
Just cleaning a little bit of stuff up. We have a two hour delay scheduled that we'll put in there with the rest of it.
Oh, right.
We'll have to take out, go ahead and just start with Power School and everything. One thing that I'm looking at doing is kind of phasing out our student planners. I don't think we get our money's worth out of them, but I polled the students and staff and I'm going to buy a few for next year, I think. But there's language in our book that says that students will have to have their planner, you know, signed for certain things, so I'll change that a little bit. The work release, I'm going to clean that up a little bit. I'm going to create a form that students have to fill out because right now it's just written letters and it's going to be a lot easier to keep track of. Just a few minor things like that. Kind of trying to go through it and clean some stuff up and all those edits that I'm going to add next, next meeting.
We'll bring this back to you with final edits. The board have anything? Any questions or qualifications on that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number two, education foundation report.
We did change, you may recall, South Central Community Foundation changed their, how they manage their funds. They have an investment committee that determines what to do with the money. They still have that committee, but they let a professional firm look at those investments every day. So we won't see a difference on our end, but I'll give you an idea of what money is So the grand total, 3.6 million, 1.36 million right now. The last quarter of last year was a little rough. Over the course of the year, it went from 1.5 to three, down to 3.6. Almost all that I think was in the quarter four of that loss. And each year, we've been taking out about 60,000. Forty thousand of that is for the library and 20 to 25 is for scholarships. We moved that into our checking account. Alisa, do you recall what our checking account balance is right now?
Like 31.
Okay, around 30,000 for scholarships and any memorials that have come in, you know, 1,000 here, 1,500 there. And we have that to pay out, our scholarships of those different assets. And we do the classroom grants each year. That's been about 7,000 or 8,000. So in our, in the investments, here's a line by line idea. Gives you an idea of what, this column here was the beginning of '17 and then the end. Oh, excuse me. Yeah, it's the beginning of '18 and the, and the end of '18 were each fund. So all of these here represent the library's funds. So total, around about a million for the library. And we've been taking those funds out and it's been replenishing. It was quite a bit less than that. So we're not in danger of getting into any principal there at all. And then various scholarship funds. And then that green line would be the general. It's not designated for any specific purpose. It's there to use as the foundation board sees fit. We use that for our classroom grants if we pull, we pull out of that. And then the Nudger Memorial Scholarship, we use that for dual credit to encourage kids to take college classes in high school where you don't get scholarships. So bottom line of that. And the total of that three, 1.36, 400 of that is scholarships, memorial, and then the general, and then about 953 for the library. Historically, what's that fund balance done? By quarter, so 2012 down here and then going across. So we're about 1.1 million in 2012. We've added and taken, used those funds and we're, now we're back up to almost 1.5. So we're in really good shape. Questions about foundation?
We've been meeting once a quarter.
Right. We've been trying to.
Yep.
Need that every.
So May 1st is the next one?
Yeah. Yeah. We do it, we have to do it a month after the quarter ends just because it takes them 30 days to get the form report done.
Item three, review summer maintenance projects.
So we've got several things we're working on. That kitchen freezer area, we need to get that done. You'll, I'm going to give bids for that over the next several weeks. Boilers, I give bids for that. We'll do some painting. The library floors, we've already approved that. That's the carpet, new carpet there. The fax kitchen floor needs some, needs replaced. We've got our music rooms, the carpet needs repaired and, or, or replaced. I think they can repair it. It's not very old carpet, just not very good work. The tile on that, the entryway from the blacktop near the shop classroom, that tile does not stay. If the sun beats down on it, it gets moisture in there. I'm going to look at having that tile removed and just polish the concrete. Frankly, that's what we ought to do with every square foot of tile that we have, just polish the concrete. You notice that's what, that's what Walmart's doing with all of their stores and doesn't require wax, very little maintenance, so we'll see about that. That'd be a good test run for what we can do there. The gym floors, we've approved that to do. We've got a little roof maintenance. Bus parking, we'll need to figure that out. I don't have any, I don't have any great solutions there. Thinking maybe our library parking lot is probably our best option right now. It'll take some work to do that, but we own the property. It's very visible. But I'll have a specific proposal for you at the next meeting between now and then. And then our pickup drop off area, elementary side, that would be more city work than what we will do. It's changing signage and painting the lines on the street and all that. So doing the one way and then eliminating the angle parking by the, by the playground and the angle parking across the street along the, along Monroe Street.
What's the date on that? On that one?
I, I don't know.
Sometime this summer, I assume?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I still haven't heard back from our engineer on that, so we need to go ahead from him to make that a one way. So those are the major things we'll have going on this summer.
Are you planning to employ some kids?
Yes, yeah, I would like to hire a couple of kids to help out with the mowing and painting and weed eating, some of that. So if you guys don't have an objection, you have to be 16 or 17 to operate machinery. We can start that probably immediately if we can round up a couple of kids, high school or college kids.
Okay. Anything on there? Anyone? Move on to KASB dues and legal assistance fund.
This is an annual item we've got to take care of. We belong to KASB, Kids Association of School Boards. Their dues are $5,337.61. We don't do the season pass. That's for some professional development for, it'd be like unlimited professional development, but we don't, we don't go to enough of that to warrant that fee. So it's just that 5,300 there. And then our legal assistance fund, we can call them at any time and they give us legal advice and we use them frequently. So if we're having an employment issue, I can call up and say, hey, here's what I'm thinking. Recreation Commission, they've been a valuable resource on what's required and, you know, just to keep our ducks in a row. We pay the fee and it's unlimited. So we do still appoint a board attorney. So if there would be legal action taken at $2,100, it doesn't cover representation in that. So.
Did that fee go up from last year?
The legal assistance fund, no. The dues is about $107 more than last year. And then the, on page 47 is the, the agreement that we'd be approving. Chad will sign that. Chad and Elisa will sign that. I'd recommend approving the dues and the legal assistance fund fee for the, for next year.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the dues of $5,337.61 for the memberships of KASB and a $2,100 for the legal assistance fund for the 2019 school year.
Second. So moving second in the board approve the dues of $5,337.61 for membership in KASB and the fee of $2,100 for the legal assistance fund for the 19, 2020 school year. All in favor, aye. Pose may. Motion carried, five zero.
Can I say one thing? I'll pass these around, just as flyers about this stuff, if you want to look at it. They send out a school board review. Do you guys get this?
Yep.
Okay. We have emails too. If you're not getting emails, you can subscribe to those as well, but there's pretty good resources if you, that they have available. And keep in mind with KSB, if an attorney needs to be called, you can call them as well. They represent you. They don't represent me or anybody else in the district. They represent the board. So.
All right, communications this month, any board member activities or reports? Eric?
Go.
Sean?
No, not really.
I've nothing, Eric.
Carl?
Nothing. I don't have anything for you tonight either. Administrative reports, Mr. White.
That, you guys got by kind of easy just by saying I got nothing. I had the honors of attending my first CPO banquet, Honors Bank, the other day. It's really, we went to Kinsley Ford. It's a pretty cool deal where our top juniors and seniors from the school get, get recognized for their academics and participation is really a cool thing. So we had seven kids go and our kids were all dressed up, very presentable. I can't say that about every school. There were some schools there that pulled the jeans and cut off shirts and stuff, so. And that was without much prompting. Kids just did a really good job. I think we'll be hosting that here in a couple of years, the way I sounded, travels around. Got big, big plans for this weekend, I hope. I hope you guys are all planning on making it to the play, Saturday and Sunday. Tom saw your play, kid's been working really hard. We have a lot of kids involved in it. And Wendy was going to try and have some kids come in today and do a little short for you, but she's in the middle of a rehearsal, so she didn't know where she'd be at this time, you know, in the, in the practice, so we opted to not have it. On our state assessment updates, we have all of our science assessments complete tomorrow and Wednesday we'll do our ELA and we have 10th grade math left. So within the next week and a half, we'll be finished with the assessments, except for a few catching up at the high school. Science is done, right? Yeah, science is all done. The other day, we sent 10 performing, we had 10 performances at Larned at the music solo and ensemble. Out of those 10, nine of them got one ratings. I put eight on there, but it was nine. We had eight out of nine individual solos that made it to state and our, and our ensemble made it to state, so that's pretty exciting. And they will perform at Heston College on the 27th of this month. Thursday this week, we have the State Large Group Festival for Music, which is another, that's for the band. They'll go perform at Pratt with our 7 through 12 kids. A lot of track meets at home. We just had one. Tomorrow, we have another one. Next week's the Keith Bligh. Tomorrow is our home golf meet as well for the varsity. On the administrative side of things, I went to Northwestern Oklahoma Teacher Recruitment Fair and just, just kind of an update, we, we didn't have any positions really open. I listed a few potentials just so, you know, I could have some things to talk to kids about, but it was a very, I talked to probably 15 to 20 kids, somewhere in there, that gave me resumes. One of the things I learned, and I think I talked to Josh about it, what schools are doing to get ahead of us is they're hosting student teachers. And I'd love to be able to find a way to host a student teacher here so that if we have an opening, we can maybe work them right into the system. That's, a lot of the schools there weren't recruiting teachers, they were recruiting student teachers, like the Royal Garden City were there because they know they're going to have those openings. So any student teacher they get, they get them in and then kind of guarantee them a job if, if they come to student teach there. So I don't know that we can guarantee a job because of the number of openings, but I think if we could find a way to get student teachers to come in from such a far distance, that would help us with recruiting later on down the road. Also helps build a relationship with this college. We have community service day coming up on the 24th. Have some, have some forms filled out from community members, still looking for more. Think we're going to be able to be totally off school and Josh is going to have great school do the, do the at-school community service. At the end of that day, we'll feed the kids hamburgers and stuff and we've, I think I've got enough or I'm getting enough donations. Last year, the kids, we had a hamburger feed or they had a hamburger feed, but it got charged against our lunch, lunch account. I've talked to Whites and a few other people in town and I think we're going to have that covered where students and teachers don't have to pay for the hamburger feed, so it'll be kind of a payback for them. So still working on that. One thing that I, and we've already talked about the handbook, one of the changes I think we're, we kind of need to look at probably at the next meeting is what we count as a fine art credit. State of Kansas requires that we have one hamburger in it. Right now, we have band vocal and Ms. Binkie's graphic design class.
And all of her art?
And all of her arts, yes, sorry. So I know one class for sure that should fall into that, in my opinion, is the audiovisual class that AV Productions, Mr. Knight has. So that'll take board action to approve that, I think. Is that right, Josh?
I don't know that for sure. I don't think so.
We'll check on that.
Support from the board, for sure.
So support for sure, but, and I've also had some questions from people about whether or not drafting and welding woodworking could be considered a fine art. So we need to dive into what the, what KSD really considers a fine art and see if that's a road we want to, want to go down for some kids, if that's something we can do. So just some things to put on your mind there.
It's kind of an interesting conversation we had, what, what makes it a fine art? You create something in 3D art class and it's, it's beautiful and people like to look at it and you create something in shop class, you know? You build something and what's the difference? Well, one is useful. Is that the defining? Yeah. Arts and we want to take away from our programs, but it's something we need to think about.
And I think, I think the question is, you know, what's best for that certain group of students? So that, that's going to be something Josh and I are going to spend some time talking about and come at you with a recommendation because we're both kind of, we don't know. That's where, where we were the last time we talked, because it sounds really good, but is that really what, you know, the road we want to go down? That's all I have. Does anybody have any questions for me?
How many community members have asked for help on the?
Don't know the number for sure, but we have a pretty good, pretty good stack of them.
About to keep everyone busy.
We could use some more. And I'm going to call like the city office and see if they have some work that needs done. Shepherd Center, things like that. Individuals, I can send them to my backyard and keep them busy for a while. Break concrete, break concrete out so I can. But no, I, we've had a decent turnout. I'd still like to get some more lined up. And then we've got some individual groups. You know, we always take a group to Hudson and that's Mrs. Whitely lines that up, sending a group out to the golf course. We're going to have a group that rearranges the prom decorations and stuff, so we've got some, quite a few things lined up, but some of them are going to take 20 minutes. Some of them are going to take a morning. And the other balance, I'd say some of that stuff, I'm going to have a hard time, I think, finding enough for the junior high kids to do because a lot of what we're doing is going to involve ladders and stuff and I'm not real well. Well, I can pay them.
Thank you. Mr. Mark?
Yeah, our Kansas education system's accreditation, that's what KISA is, we love acronyms in education. But our accreditation process, just to give you an idea, the process, you know, it's a five-year cycle. We're in year two. Our goal, our task this year is to create specific goals for improvement. And that's what we're working on over the next few weeks to finalize all that. We've had some conversations about that. Really, our goals are focused on family engagement. We've got a lot of things working there to meet that goal, just do a better job with that. And then social emotional learning, you know? We had a good conversation with our elementary group about, and it's really the same with the high school, you know? To move the needle, to get better for all kids. We've got that segment of our population that, that comes to school with a lot of baggage and the parents don't make them come to school and that, that group of kids, we've got to find a way to move them up, to move everybody up. And we spend so much time and resources on, on those few kids that bring a lot of baggage from home. So that's what we're, where we're focused there. What can we do? You know, we can't control what parents do, but we can have an influence. We can't control whether kids come to kindergarten ready, but we can have an influence with our parents' teachers program or preschool. So that's where we're headed there. District leadership team is going to meet a week from today and then our site council on Wednesday. And then our outside visitation team will come in on May 8th. So that'll be a yearly thing. I'm excited to announce the challenge award. I included a, as she did here on the next page. So St. John Elementary was recognized with the challenge award. Basically means we're doing better than expected on our state assessments. So based on our population with our poverty and attendance rates and the challenges that we have, we performed a lot better than expected. And that, that's a testament to our teachers and so that's, that's a pretty neat award. Very proud of that for, you know, our state assessment scores last year. We did, every grade in math and reading was at or above the state average on the average score or the percentage of kids that we had performing at grade level was better than the state average for, for every test in elementary except for one, I think third grade, English Language Arts. And actually, the high school, every single level, every single grade, junior high and high school for math and reading was at or above the state average and had a higher percentage of kids performing at grade level than the state average. I think the difference there was why we didn't see that award there, I think maybe the top end, there was fewer kids performing at the highest category in our high school. That's my guess. So we did very well on those things. That's just one measure of success. We've kind of taken the emphasis off of high stakes testing, but it is still important whether our kids know how to read and write and do math. So I guess that, all the things we've done, the innovative things we've done, the changes we've made, we're still doing the right thing. So teachers are doing a great job. Social studies resources, we're looking at updating our textbooks and resources for social studies. So you'll be seeing those checks come through. It's going to be fifth and sixth grade and a few seventh, eighth grade and then, so a little bit different, doing something different at each level. Mr. Bauer doesn't need a textbook, he pulls in a lot of primary resources, you know, they look at the actual documents, not from a textbook, so there won't be a huge expense there, but. So we won't see one big bid for fifth grade through 12th grade. It'll just be a little bit here and there. You may have seen this, but I don't think I mentioned it in a board meeting, but Angie Webb got her, she did the coursework to be a national board certified teacher. So that's a, that's a pretty neat deal. That comes with a thousand dollar bonus each year. The state will reimburse us for that up until this year, I think is the first year. They used to reimburse schools for it, but then the past several years, it's still been in state law that schools have to pay that thousand dollar bonus, but the state didn't provide any money for it, so they're, they've appropriated those funds. So that's exciting. I do want to give a shout out to Becky and Dean Thrasher. They've been working on the Memorial Garden outside the Early Ed Building. Theresa-
Teresa Miller, you know, she volunteered to do that when they put that in. And now that she's retired and not around, Becky and Dean said they'd take it on, so all year they've been really working on that. I wanna give them credit for that. Legislative update, new school finance bill has been passed and signed. This increases base state aid for our school district and every school district in Kansas above what, what those planned increases were over the next few years. There are a few things in here, nothing major. You know, they're gonna do some audits for at-risk education. We get a lot of funds for at-risk and whether those in the state or those dollars being spent wisely. Frankly, a lot of that just goes to make sure we can have a, a second kindergarten teacher and a second teacher for second grade and those things. So we don't have a class of 30 kids and all of our kids benefit from that. Another audit for unincumbent cash. The 20 mils will continue. There's no, there's no danger of that increasing, which was feared. So not a lot of changes in procedure or anything like that. What does that mean for our district? I believe I've got this one on there, but if you need it closer. So from last year to this year, we saw an increase of about $60,000 in funding. After we went through our enrollment audit and everything, we lost a few. It was a little bit lower than expected. I, I thought that was gonna be closer to 100. When all is said and done, it's more like 60. Next year, if things stay the same, again, this is based on estimates, we're using, last year, the year before's headcount for enrollment, so that we'll be using that 315, but then our waitings for transportation and how many kids we have in our Career and Tech Ed classes, all of those things, that can vary, so I, I'm just estimating that. So that's where the estimate was off. This year, we had fewer waitings. So we're looking at about $114,000 more over this year. And then the following year, it looks like an additional 70,000 to 80,000. Now, if next year's enrollment goes up, 2021 could, could be a little more. So that's good news. My fear is, I think I sent this to you in a note. The State Department of Education's figured what the factor for inflation should be and said that they should add about 360 million over the next four years, which is about 90 million a year. So if it did that, the base state aid would take it up to this green line. Well, what they did is just add 90 million dollars to each year, not, not on top of the, the previous year. So that doesn't quite get to that additional 360 million. It's better, but my fear is that it's not gonna pass the court muster because they said it needs to be at this level to figure for inflation and it's not quite getting there. So I don't know what, what will happen there. So the law's been passed, been signed, now goes to the court, so. Any questions on that? This week, I'm headed to our Superintendent's Association Board Meeting. I serve on that board. And then we have our State Superintendent's Council. We'll get some updates there in Topeka. So I'll be in Topeka pretty much all day on Wednesday. We're going to, Marla and Lisa and I are going to the Kansas Association of School Business Officers Meeting here at the end of the month. They have a workshop in, which, I've not been to that one. There's some good stuff on the, capital improvements and facilities and school safety and Marla and Lisa will give them some council payroll and payroll and those things, keep us in line there. One other thing is our board elections. I've, I've put a note in the newspaper just to notify the public. Lisa has certified that vacancies to the, not vacancies, but positions that are up for election to the county clerk. And this information's on our website, so if you have anybody ask. Derek and Chad and Darren and Debbie, those four positions are out, so I hope you all plan to run again. If you'd like to say one way or the other.
I don't know yet, honestly. We'll see.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Okay.
Okay.
Chad, anything else?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably not.
And I haven't heard from, from Debbie. If anybody has any questions on that, let me know or if anybody asks you about running, feel free to send them in. June 1st is the deadline, by the way, for, for. Filing for election.
When's it open?
I think right now.
It's open?
Get in there and put your name down.
Still $10 on you if you do well.
I think there's been inflation, isn't it toward now?
Any executive session items this evening?
I have none.
Okay. Closing this, closing business items, future agenda?
You have your list there. Our fee schedule, I don't have on here, Sean was asking earlier about our coaches, our supplemental positions. We'll, we do that in May typically, so that, I have that one on there too. Oh, I do have it on, let's see. So I'm in contract signing this.
Great, adjourned. Any motion?
So.
Second.
All favor, I.
Aye.
Nay. Motion period, five zero, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.